I would like to reconvene the city council meeting for the evening and would ask for a roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Hill. There is no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. I would ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance being led this evening by Assemblyman Keith Curry, followed by the invocation by Reverend Melissa Wrestler of the Christ Church by the Sea.
As we continue to remember the men and women of our armed forces this Memorial Day weekend, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I invite you to be in an attitude of prayer, and if you so choose, to pray with me. God of peace be with all gathered here this evening. We are thankful that we live and work in one of the most beautiful cities on earth. We pray for the city of Newport Beach and for the surrounding areas, that the needs of all for food and shelter, for work, for justice and dignity would be met. We pray too that the diverse people that make up our community would join together, combining our efforts for the good of all. Guide this city through the hands of all its people, as we feed the hungry, heal the sick, and comfort those who sorrow. Give wisdom and discernment to our city council members and our mayor, that they may make the best decisions for those they are called to serve. May we all find ways to serve one another and help our city. Let it be. Amen.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation with respect to lupus Awareness Month. And is Bridget Hood here in the audience? Bridget, if you would come on down to the table, I have a proclamation for you, and then would love to have you make some comments if you would like, and then we'll take a ceremonial picture.
Thank you.
All right. Whereas systematic lupus erythematosis...
Erythematosis.
I get an award for that one, by the way. Commonly known as lupus is an acute, chronic, complex, and often life-threatening autoimmune disease. And whereas tens of thousands of Southern Californians and more than 1.5 million people nationwide are affected with lupus or related disease. And whereas lupus primarily strikes women in their prime, affecting all aspects of their lives, family, friendships, education, and careers. And whereas women of color develop lupus at a rate two to three times the rate of Caucasian developed lupus. And whereas lupus can be particularly difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to symptoms of other illnesses. And whereas early diagnosis and proper treatments are critical to the improvement of the quality of life and survival rate of people with lupus. And whereas increased public awareness, education, and research are key to winning the battle against lupus. Now therefore, I, Rushan Hill, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2014 to be Lupus Awareness Month in the city of Newport Beach, and further congratulate the Lupus Research Institute and Lupus LA on its most important work, furthering critical research, serving lupus sufferers, and educating the public on the devastating impact of this disease.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hill and all council members. We truly, truly appreciate this. I personally was diagnosed with lupus 27 years ago at the young age of 17, and I nearly died more than once when I was 19-years-old. I've since had a kidney transplant because of lupus, and we do this kind of work so that we can spread awareness. It's actually frightening. I started advocating in Washington DC five-years ago, and it was there that I learned that there is no specific curriculum for lupus in medical school. So, we have over 1.5 million people, as you mentioned, with this disease currently, far more than AIDS, MS, and Parkinson's combined. Currently, there's only one drug that has been specifically approved for lupus, and that has been Lister. Over 50-years ago, they approved aspirin and Plaquenil, which is an antimalarial drug. So, in the meantime, patients are getting sicker and sicker. We're borrowing from other drugs, but we are making huge strides with this disease, and I'm living proof. If I were diagnosed today, I guarantee I would not have to have gone through a kidney transplant. So, I thank you again. And I also have Larissa Nieto here, who's going to share a little bit about her story.
Before you step back, since you do have an audience also on television...
Yes.
...to raise awareness, do you want to give some ideas of like symptoms or something, so people might be more aware?
Yes. Some of the common symptoms, there's actually 11 symptoms that you have for lupus, and then there's a gamut of blood tests. One of them in particular is the ANA anti-nuclear antibody test. Some of the symptoms would be extreme fatigue, joint pain, (I'm jumping a few things) hair loss. If you have kidney involvement, you would start swelling, high blood pressure. The one thing about lupus that I do want to share is that no two patients are alike. So, it's actually, again, frightening that patients are going undiagnosed. I just learned of a 13-year-old girl that passed away about three weeks ago. I have another friend who it took them forever to diagnose her. By the time they did diagnose her, she was in stage four kidney failure, nearly died, was on dialysis for nine-years. And this, again, is something that we can absolutely live a normal life with. I do also want to mention that we are under the umbrella of the Lupus Research Institute and Lupus LA, and we do have a support group here in Irvine. We meet at the United University Methodist Church in Irvine on Culver Drive, and it's the first Monday of every month at 7:00 PM. You can go to lupusla.org to find out more about it. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Larissa Nieto, and like Bridget said, I've also been diagnosed with lupus. I was diagnosed when I was 19-years-old. I'm 25-years-old today, or not today, but this year, and I'm living proof that lupus has many faces. When I was 19, they thought I had rheumatoid arthritis until they ran some blood tests, and that was when the ANA came up positive, and that's when they gave me the diagnosis. The diagnosis was actually very scary for me at age 19. I didn't know what lupus was. I thought it was a older disease, but you know, sometimes you get it, and sometimes you don't. So, it turns out that I got the diagnosis, and I'm so glad that I did, because they were able to treat it very early. I'm actually on this new drug now called Benlistah that has been FDA-approved recently just for lupus. I was on Prednisone and Plaquenil for a long time, and Prednisone is a very, very intense steroid if taken in high doses. So, I was able to become my own advocate and be able to tell my doctor that I would like to try a different method. So, I was able to do that with the help through Bridget and the support group. I was able to find them through Lupus LA, and I've been going for three-years now and sharing my story and letting others know that lupus has many faces, and I am one of them, and I'm still here today. And I will continue to share my story and help fight for more treatments. So, thank you for your time today. I hope we kind of shine some light on lupus for you. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll take a picture. Right, Madam Clerk, notice to the public?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three-minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda.
Councilwoman DeGel. Sorry, looked one-way.
The Cron Del Mar 5K will be Saturday, June 7. For those of you who have participated, it's one of the really fun events. It's not an easy course, quite a few hills in it, but the nice thing about it is there's a fun walk, there's a dolphin dash for the kids. So, whatever your level of fitness, there's something for you to do, and I hope you'll all come out. And you can get more information on the Cron Del Mar Chamber website. And does the city have a link also? Okay.
Councilwoman Petros.
Mr. Mayor, on the 12th of May, we held a meeting at the old city hall site to discuss an item that we'll be talking about a little bit later, but I just want to let the public know that when the meeting was regarding the West Newport Community Center and where the possible location could be, the event was standing-room only. I want to thank the people who came out and shared their perspectives on the sites that we are considering for a West Newport Community Center. And let me just note, we're talking about building a community center for West Newport. That in and of itself should be cause for celebration. Where it goes will have the full vetting of this community, and as I've said before, I will be delighted that when we cut that ribbon, if we make the decision properly, everybody is there and can say that this is their home. So, I want to thank all those who came out, and I want to thank those that did provide their input, both at that meeting, online, and in messages to me. We had a Neighborhood Watch at our home this last week, and I want to thank the people at Newport Beach Police Department for the efforts that are available to you in the community and me in the community. If you have not had Lieutenant Saros and Andy Query to your home, it is extremely informative of how you can make your neighborhood safe against the most common crimes that occur in Newport Beach: property theft, breaking and entering. It lasted about an hour. It got my street, Holly Lane, yay, Holly Lane, together, so it was really good. I encourage you, learn about these issues. Have the police department in your neighborhood. The Neighborhood Watch is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to just make yourself just that little bit safer. And then finally, we will be experiencing continued work by the sanitation district in Newport Beach. We have almost finished, wrapped up, the work on Dover Drive near Coast Highway, but sometime in the fall, it seems that, or we're getting the message, that there will be some work by the sand district along Coast Highway in the Mariners Mile area, and that that project will be a long-term, ongoing project that's going to have some issues with our traffic flow. So, with that as a kind of a preamble, I'm wondering if I can't ask Mr. Kiff or you and Mr. Webb to maybe come back to us at an appropriate time and give us input that we can then take out into the community about schedule, the extent of the project, and let the people of Newport Beach know what we may be expecting in terms of disruptions along the Mariners Mile part of Coast Highway. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Selig.
Just one announcement. It's my favorite one of the year, because this Sunday is the Balboa Island Parade. The theme this year is Star Spangled Islands. So, there'll be a lot of vehicles and golf carts and what-have-you all decorated in that theme. This is known as the parade, that the actual participants in the parade are longer than the parade route itself. Very unique parade. Be an opportunity to see your favorite council person riding in the parade. If you don't have a favorite council person, you can see someone else there, I guess.
Have you finished?
No. The parade starts at 11:00 AM, and the Balboa Island Bridge on Rean Avenue, that's going to close at 10:30. So, if you want to get on the island, you've got to get there by 10:30. So, 11 o'clock this Sunday, Balboa Island Parade, Star Spangled Islands.
Do they still have the sign up on the peninsula side of the ferry telling, I think we've done that in the past, warning people not to cross over to the island because they might get stuck?
That's a condition of the special event permit, so we'll look at that to make sure.
Councilwoman DeGel.
Yes, our fire department offers internships, as does our public works department, and the public works department internships pay. So, if your son or daughter or grandchild has an interest in engineering and project types of work, apply at the city public works department. With respect to the fire department, the city fire department offers or provides advanced life services, very sophisticated types of services, obviously trying to administer care in the golden hour, when things can really make an effect on people's well-being. And one of the interns this year for our fire department is named Andrew Morales, and Andrew is a pitcher for University of California, Irvine, and he was just named Big West Conference Pitcher of the Year. I know his uncle, that's how I get these updates. And he'll be playing next in Corvallis at the opening of the NCAA regional tournament. And he's also up for a national award as basically the best college baseball player this year. So, his ERA hovers around one run a game, which is pretty impressive. And I got to see the Anteaters play over at Anteater Hill, I think is what they call their stadium. So, that was our intern, well, pitcher of the year anyhow. And then secondly, is with the John Wayne Airport, the County of Orange has released the environmental impact report for the proposed amendment of the settlement agreement. So, that's now available. In general, an EIR serves to inform governmental agencies and the public of a project's environmental impacts. The EIR proposes mitigation measures and analyzes alternatives to the proposed project. The EIR is available at our library. It's also available online at our city planning department. There will be a community meeting tomorrow evening in Tustin at the Hughes Middle School, and so the public can comment. So, you can comment at meetings. You can also send the county a letter. With, and as I mentioned, there's alternatives that are studied within EIRs. And the city's preferred project, and this was negotiated previously, is that we protect and extend the noise-based curfew through 2035, so more than 20-years. The settlement agreement expires December 31, 2015, so that's the timing of the extension. So, keeping the curfew in effect, that means there's no commercial departures before 7:00 AM, Monday to Saturday, nor before 8:00 AM on Sunday, and no arrivals on any day of the week after 11:00 PM. We're also looking to maintain the million annual passenger map cap of 10.8 through 2020, with an additional 1 million map allowed in 2021 to 2025. And during the period of 2026 to 2030, an additional .7 map may be allowed if JW's use shows at least 11.21 map in any calendar year during 2021 to 2025. We're also looking to maintain the current cap on average daily departures of the Class A, which are the loudest commercial air carriers. So, those are the project, the preferred project of the city. I would encourage you to review the EIR and make any comments as to what you believe it to be. Now, up until this point, we've had significant participation from the four parties that signed the settlement agreement, in addition to the city of Newport Beach and the County of Orange. It would be also the airport working group, and SPON, Stop Polluting Our Newport. So, the activist community, as we've known it, seems to be on board with what's being proposed. So, again, as citizens, it's now your opportunity to comment, and comments will be accepted until 5:00 PM on July 8. So, thank you very much.
For those of you that are not aware, Councilwoman DeGel chairs our Citizens Aviation Committee. I've been very involved in this all the way along. Councilmember Hen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There will be a member, a meeting of the Tidlins Management Committee on Thursday, May 29, in the community center meeting room. The agenda will be solely devoted to a further consideration of the Balboa Island Seawall Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Curry.
The last two weeks have been a time to celebrate our veterans and to celebrate our armed forces, along with Mayor Hill and Councilman Selig. I participated in the Field of Honor that was put on again this year by our exchange club. And if you've never been up there to see the 776 flags in Castaways Park, it's really a thrilling presentation. And then during Memorial Day, I celebrated with the Freedom Committee, which is based in Costa Mesa, but includes several of the Pearl Harbor survivors who speak at schools to remind people about the challenges and the time of Pearl Harbor and the sacrifices that we collectively made as Americans in World War II at the Mount Olive Cemetery in Costa Mesa. And then finally, just to mention, to congratulate those on Balboa Island, who put on once again the Art Walk, which continues to be one of the most consistently great one-day art exhibitions anywhere in Southern California. And a great crowd was drawn, I could tell by the parking, that a lot of people were there and really enjoying that.
Thank you, and I have no reports at this time. Public comments on the consent calendar.
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar, items 1 through 15, for discussion. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar. Speakers must limit comments to three-minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If an item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three-minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Councilwoman DeGel, do you have anything to pull from consent calendar?
I don't.
Councilwoman Hen.
I do not.
Councilwoman Curry.
No items?
Councilwoman Gardner.
Items 14 and 15, and I will recuse myself on item number six, which is the Cron Del Mar Farmer's Market, because it's within 500 feet of my home.
Councilwoman Petros.
I have none, other than 14.
And Councilwoman Selig.
I have none.
And I have none.
Mr. Mayor, staff would like to continue item 11, if that would be made part of your action.
Okay. With that, it would be appropriate for public comments on those items that remain on the consent calendar. So, that would be all items with the exception of 14 and 15.
And 11.
And 11. Any public comments on any of those remaining items? Please, come forward. You would give us your name as you start.
My name is Rick Heil, and I manage the Cron Del Mar Certified Farmer's Market. And I just wanted to come up forward here and thank the city for all their support for the market. It's in its 18th year, and particularly in this process, staff, two members of staff, Lauren Woodding, a lot of effort and time went into the renegotiations of this permit, as well as Assistant City Manager, I've got to forget her first name.
Mr. Batum?
Tara, Tara Finnegan. I'd also like to thank her publicly, as well as the community that has supported the market on behalf of the farmers all these years. It's just a tremendous community event, and we're very grateful, and I speak for the farmers, extremely grateful for everything that's gone on all this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anyone else that would like to speak on the items that remain on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council and ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar items 1 through 15, with the exceptions of item 11, 14, and 15, and noting a recusal on item number six by Councilwoman Gardner.
The continuance, I assume, would be on item number 11?
11, excuse me, yeah, 11. It's a continuance.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0. And prior, let me also read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance number 2014-10, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach granting a non-exclusive solid waste franchise to Tierra Verde Industries, a California corporation, to provide solid waste collection services upon the city streets and within the city of Newport Beach.
Thank you. Item number 14, Councilwoman Gardner.
I have been to two community meetings on the location of the community center. I found that they were fairly similar in the reactions, and I would like to propose something that's probably not ripe, except in my own mind, but that we eliminate... but that we eliminate the Superior and 16th Street location, or Superior and Coast Highway site, for the reasons that, I think there are so many reasons against it that over, far outweigh any benefits. The traffic issue of the right in, right out, you know, yeah, we might be able to fix it, but I was very much struck by the whole discussion of, it was, in this case, it was a tsunami, but any kind of emergency exit, that's a bad area anyway, so to compound it. It just seemed to me that the, as I say, the arguments against were so much stronger than the arguments for, and that the other site just didn't have a lot of these same issues. So rather than spending a lot of staff time to continue having more outreach meetings, where we're going to hear basically the same things, and to spend a lot of time further evaluating a site that's going to cost us far more money to develop and that thing, I would say we eliminated that. And then if we want to consider an additional site, such as has been mentioned by Councilman Selich or something, that to me would be a better use of our funds. So that was just something I thought I would throw out there.
I believe that the staff had some additional input on additional statistics that have come in since the last reporting.
We actually do, and if you'd like, we could present those to you.
Or we can finish our comments.
Sure.
I appreciate Councilmember Gardner's thoughts on that. I was, like I said, attended that meeting as well. And with the late-breaking news on the way that this is going, along with just some considerations that I've had in my professional opinion and career, would support you. I think that the Superior PCH site has a lot of opportunity if it weren't for access and the location at Superior and PCH. And instead of going through a lot of the heartburn, we could be using our time and resources to a much more productive end in the Second District to look forward to something at either the 16th Street, or if Councilmember Selich wants to offer up any other suggestions. So I would support your notion.
I think that's my cue. I'd like to suggest that we include the road and track property, the property out on Monrovia is a site to study. It was a property that we had originally acquired to preserve the 15th Street right-of-way and also possible use as a community center site. There's some land exchange involved with the potential 15th Street right-of-way with the adjacent property owner. I think it's an excellent area to have a community center. There's the Coastal Line Community College right across the street. There will either be a community park if the Banning Ranch project is approved by the city right next to it, or if the Banning Ranch project isn't approved, there will be a large open space area there. So I'd like to see us include that in the study.
The council comments?
I support that direction as well in eliminating the 16th Street and Superior site. And it isn't just because of more staff time, but it's also consultant expenses. And we just need to avoid this project becoming a consultant slot machine like previous projects have been at the city. And we need to exercise fiscal restraint. So for those reasons, I support that as well.
Right, and your comment is related to the Superior PCH?
Right, to eliminate that. And I support Mayor Protem's suggestion that we evaluate that other site.
All right. Councilman Hen.
Yeah, I'd just add my support for that as well. I think it makes sense, and the more I've thought about the Superior and PCH site, the less tenable that alternative has become.
All right. Would the city like to share the updated statistics?
If you'd like to have them, we'll show them to you.
Thank you.
Well, just cut to the chase here, let's get to the numbers. Just to give you a little background, we had a workshop on May 12th, as Councilman Petros reported, and we had 112 attendees, which was a very, very good process, had a lot of great input. Online, numbers have been growing, mostly because of some good outreach by our staff and along with some good positive media exposure. Over the weekend, we actually had a lot of things changed. So our staff report originally showed that we were, it was kind of a 50-50 proposition. So as usual, the wisdom of the council is coming through because the folks agree with The average age of the input online?
I'm not sure that's the usual, though.
Well, I don't know. You are the leader, sir.
I prefer to see it the other way around. The wisdom of our residents has come through.
Oh, we'll say that online, 60% of the women were more responsive of this, so guys, you've got to step it up a little bit. So here are the programs that we had put out, and let me just cut to the chase here. Of course, those are the diagrams of the community center concept at both locations. So it shows about 60% in favor of the 16th Street location. There were some other odd 4.7% of people that were proposing other sites. So it's pretty obvious that 16th is the right site. And just to give you a little more on the amenities, the top amenities were the four-to-six-lane lap pool, although Laura's informed me that we possibly could go bigger with that, especially at the 16th site, perhaps up to eight-lane lap pool. And that reflects a lot of the comments we got from the public, that they would like a little more space in that pool. The walking track with fitness stations also came in very high, the community garden were also very popular. And then the indoor amenities, the fitness center, wellness rooms, the art, mixed-media rooms, and flexible rooms. It's basically, the bottom line is lots of rooms for lots of different activities, along with the gymnasium, which was still a very popular choice. And then we had a lot of comments, and I think you've heard a lot of these, so I think I won't bore you and go through them all. So we're pointing towards now the 16th Street lot. Although one of the things we did hear a lot is that very lot of concerns over the safety issues for Sunset Ridge Park. So I might add, in addition to maybe looking at 16th Street, that staff continue looking at ways to help Sunset Ridge Park, including the pursuit of the pedestrian over crossings, and maybe looking at other uses to that Superior site, maybe more parking maybe not needed. We'll have to do some studies. And then maybe some other uses. And we had several folks ask for other uses at the Superior site, including dog parks. So we should, might want to explore some of those too in the future. And that's really what I had, so thanks.
Very good. Any further council comments?
Yeah, Laura, I was wondering if you could comment on the aquatics in town, and how the pools at the high schools are used, and just the stress that's placed on our aquatics programs and the high school.
Right, so the pools that we provided in, in both of the options, call for a 60-by-75 dimension pool, which is around seven lanes. And so what we were talking about is bumping that up to 65, 75 dimension, where we could provide for eight lanes, 25 yard, which would provide for all types of uses and all levels. So we know that there's a demand out there. The city does not currently have a pool. We run programs at both of the high school pools. Very complex process for us to go through to get adequate time for the community for recreational uses. So one of the thoughts is if we were to include a pool in this facility, then we might be able to free up some of the time that we use at the high school pools, which will help them with their competitive events. What we were thinking would be best for this site is really to focus on our recreational program, which is lap swimming, learn to swim programs, which are very popular in the community, and just getting some more pool time for the community in general for drop-in use. But heavy demand, and we've gotten some great feedback from the community on how excited they are about the possibility of adding a city pool at this facility.
And we have a motion that would kind of summarize where we are on this, so we could have the public comment?
I move that we eliminate the Superior and PCH site as a consideration for the community center, that we do at least a preliminary study looking at figures for the site that Councilman Selich has proposed. And I don't know, shall I also say that, and that staff would continue to explore ways to improve pedestrian access in that, in the Superior PCH area?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any further council comment?
I did have a question. Who are the design professionals being retained to look at this?
We have not retained anyone as of yet.
Okay.
All right, seeing no further council questions or comments, I'd open this up to the public. Anybody in the public like to comment on this agenda item?
My name is Mike Johnson.
Could you step over just a little bit closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Mike Johnson, I live at 5803 Seashore Drive. I've lived in West Newport for over 50 years. I have used that intersection of PCH and Superior every day of my life down here. I am so relieved with your motion and approval, and I want to commend you. I do have a history of liking to see more parks in Newport Beach, and I think that there should be some exploration of the 16th Street Park for soccer players and these leagues that are so short of activity areas. I think there's room with some clever remodeling of that area to include a playfield. But in any event, thank you very much for the relief that I feel right now.
Thank you for your comment.
I do feel a little guilty coming up here because I agree with everything that's been said. So I'm going to go through my PowerPoint real fast, okay? But I'm primarily doing this for anybody watching at home, because there are a few people at home who are emotionally attached to the Superior and PCH site, just because, you know, they think it looks so nice, and they live down there, and they don't understand all the problems with that site. So the good news is, yes, we did have an online poll. People had to have an email or Facebook, so there's a real person behind each vote. And they did reflect the votes. It's 63% to 36% for the Superior site, okay? And this is just from going online and looking at that. I tracked the poll over three days, it only changed about 1%. So I think if it was open for 30 more days, it's not going to change much. And this is what's being offered to the public, that the Superior site fixes the problem at Sunset Ridge Park, because we have lots of parking and a bridge. I think if the public was told, and staff has said this, we're going to have parking on Superior and a pedestrian bridge, I don't think the Superior site would have even got as many votes as it got. Okay, you know, my pictures. Okay, I just said this, done. I did stand at the parking lot this weekend for about half an hour. Cars would drive in, drive right back out. The parking lot is full. So anybody wanted it there, if it was 300 cars, parking space, it would be filled with beach users on nice days. Car drives in, drives out. I could show you 20 cars driving, drive out, not going to do it. Why are they driving in and driving out across the street? The parking lot is full. What happens across the street? They tow the cars. Letty told me that on any given day, she can tow up to 22 cars, okay? And that's what happened. So that's why they're parking in our city lot. It says a six-hour maximum time at our city lot. Cars get towed. What happens when you come down Superior Highway? You can't make it across the street, the light will change on you. Your cars are stuck in the intersection. This is level of service, EF. For people who don't understand, that's how, if the traffic is stopped in the intersection, it's an F. We have EF at that intersection. So it means people would want to go to the community center, they couldn't get to it, okay? This is the traffic backing up the hill. This happens any day the sun comes out and it warms up. So, you know, I was at this point two months ago when it came up, because I lived through this for 25 years, and I understand that people who just drive by it didn't understand. But with all the research, you've come to this conclusion. Okay, anyways, bottom paragraph, you know, what the public needs to know is there is a commitment by this council and staff to fix Sunset Ridge Park, put more parking on the surface area, and put a bridge across. The 65 spaces there will not service that park. That's it. In conclusion, I want to say I have 100% respect, of course, for all of you, but in particular Ed Selich. I loved the road and track site when you were negotiating to buy it. The first thing I thought of, wouldn't it be a lovely place for our new community center? I've walked both sites, looking at that side, the road will take maybe 20%, 25% of it, okay? And then it is right adjacent to Holmes and Newport Crest. So even if we got some land out of Banning Ranch, this, you know, I think if they evaluate the available space there, 16th Street is just a block further north. We have room for community gardens, there's a five-year list at Oasis. Why make people wait when we have plenty of space here? A larger swimming pool. People voted for the small pool, we need a larger pool. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
George.
George, you're in sales, aren't you? Real estate sales? Isn't there an adage that says, no one, you've made the sale?
I said this was for the people at home. This was for the people at home.
I'll be even quicker. Lori Morris, West Newport, I would like to thank you all for being so good about this. We, everybody had shown up and gave their opinion, and I'm so glad that you've decided on this. I just want to thank you. A lot of people at home would like to thank you, so, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. With respect to Mayor Protem Selich's proposal, I just wanted to express a little confusion because when earlier this evening you adjourned to your closed session, the city attorney told us that you were going to be discussing the sale of the road and track property. And it is listed here as a supplemental closed session agenda item. And while it would be, is fine to consider what that property is worth and whether people are interested in it, I would think of it still in play as a possibility for our West Newport Center. It would be premature to make a decision to sell it yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing no one else, I'll bring it back to the council. Any further comments? Are you ready to vote? Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Item number 15, Councilwoman Gardner.
This seems to have gotten a little beyond what I was even thinking of. We have as part of the description of EQAC in the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee for the city, that it meets basically at the will of the council. And so I asked to have it on the agenda, just so I was following everything, just an item, may we call a meeting of EQAC. And it has sort of evolved into something more, I'm not quite sure why, but that's all I want. Because my thinking is that it is like, in its own sense, the Harbor Commission, that it would meet, it would set up some objectives, would bring the objectives back to council to see if the council wanted them to pursue any of those objectives, and if so, they would, and they would bring back reports to the council. I'm perfectly happy with the way it's structured right now, as far as, I don't need to, so really, all I wanted was just to say, yeah, let's have a meeting of EQAC.
So your position would be then to offer a motion to call a meeting of EQAC and charge them with the opportunity of putting together a program suggestion, coming back before the council for approval?
Right, and so they would be making no decisions, except these are some things we think would be good for the city to explore, and then we would say yea or nay.
Okay. Are you making such a motion?
I move that.
I'll second that.
All right. Any council discussion on that?
Mayor Hill, I think that that is a wonderful idea. I think that we're in the process of developing sustainability practices for the city. That would be a great place to vet them. There's a whole host of issues that can fall within a reconstituted EQAC, and I would support the motion.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing no one, bring it back to the council. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Adam Clerk, public comments on non-agenda items?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any individuals that would like to speak on non-agenda items?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosier. Your two main agenda items tonight are the renewal of the two surviving business improvement districts that we have. And I submitted a written comment regarding the two business improvement districts that you disestablished last year, and have now reemerged as merchants associations. and have now reemerged as merchants associations that we provide public money to without any required financial contribution on their own part. One on Balboa Island, one in Balboa Village. I just wanted to clarify that written comment I submitted. Since writing that, I did look in the city clerk's contract database and I was able to find the agreements that the city manager made with those two merchants associations. Their contracts number C5607 and C5608. And I was pleased to see that as a requirement for the $40,000 that was given to each of them, there is a contractual requirement that they present to you by your first meeting in June, which would be your next meeting, two weeks from tonight. A report detailing how they spent this year's grant money and how they will be spending the budget, the budget for how they will spend the grant if they receive one in this year's budget. And I look forward to seeing those reports. And it just seems a little bit unfortunate that it's two weeks from tonight rather than tonight because how those are operating might inform your decision about the two other business improvement districts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on with our public hearings. Item number 16.
Mayor, oral reports from city council?
I'm sorry. Yes. Councilwoman Gardner?
I have nothing.
Councilman Petros?
I have nothing.
Councilman Hen? Scared you, didn't I?
I have a report. The Balboa Village Advisory Committee meeting was held on Wednesday, May the 14th. Two significant agenda items. One was to review and agree upon some recommendations for the facade improvement program in the village. The second agenda item was to review and approve some recommendations for improving and increasing the maintenance program in Balboa Village. Thank you.
Councilwoman Deagle?
Yes. Tomorrow, Vector Control is going to begin its project in Lower Big Canyon to drop the water level, make it less inviting for mosquitoes. And they went about getting the agency approvals. There are many, in just a very proficient way. They've also come up with a cost-effective engineering solution. And a friend who went to MIT told me once that some of the most innovative and cost-effective engineering comes off the farms of the Midwest, born of necessity. And the vector control solution here is about $15,000. And I remember going to a meeting where people talked about a $250,000 solution. And some of our staff members, Bob Stein and Pat Thomas, said, you know, we think we can do this for $10,000, $20,000. So that's what we've come up with. They're going to be using a pretty simple configuration, a pump and a hose, and try to drop the water level. So, thank you.
Councilman Curry? Councilman Selig?
Just one item. Tomorrow, at 12:30 to 2:30, the local coastal plan implementation committee is meeting in the Newport Coast Room and will be continuing our discussions on the development of the local coastal implementation plan.
I have four brief things to comment on. We heard this evening talk of the Art Walk, the Balboa Island Art Walk. I would just reemphasize that that is a real signature event for Balboa Island. It's a great event for the community. And when you see it pop up next year in the papers, plan on attending. A lot of additional local artists and just a lot of fine stuff to look at. The Field of Honor event is probably one of the most awe-inspiring events that happens in Newport Beach, if not in Southern California. When you see the castaways covered with 1,776 flags, it's hard to not become emotional over the presence of that color and everything that that color represents. And so I would urge all of you once again to keep your eye out for the Field of Honor. The Exchange Club does an incredible job in putting that on each and every year. I also had the pleasure of joining Explorer Ocean and Sherman Gardens this last couple of weeks at the ceremony of Explorer Ocean, turning over a black and white photograph collection of 50,000 photos, they estimate. No one's ever counted all of them yet, of the history of sailing and the history of Newport Beach, taken by a local photographer that worked for LA Water and Power, I think. But a remarkable collection, and it will be on display. Sherman Gardens now will be the permanent home for that collection. I would urge everyone to take time to visit that site and visit the collection. The other thing that I had the opportunity of doing this last couple of weeks, which I thought was one of the best ones of several that I've attended, but our police department, like our fire department, will have promotions of local officers. And this year, we promoted Officer Peter Carpenteria, Penny Freeman, Tracy McKenzie, and Brandon Rodriguez to the rank of sergeant, which is an important and big deal within our police department and all of those internal advancements. And then also, part-time parking control officer promoted to animal control, Nick Ott. Tremendously important ceremony for our police. The community room across the hall was absolutely filled with their families present and everything, from infants to teenagers and young adults and grandparents and everything else. And during that, the chief exposed, if you will, probably not the right word, the core values that our city staff is working under and that the city staff is talking about amongst themselves on a regular basis. And I thought that something worthy of sharing. The core values are responsibility, initiative, excellent service, one team, and integrity. And within responsibility noted is mastering your job, taking ownership of your work product and meeting deadlines. It also means being reliable, dependable, accountable for your decisions and actions. Initiative is readiness to take action, being proactive, seeking solutions. Is always means having a high motivation to take on additional responsibility and welcome new opportunities, techniques, and approaches. We do run this city as an entrepreneurial activity. Excellent service means providing thorough, efficient, effective service with the courtesy and professional attitude. It also means being informed, timely, and open to complaints and requests. One team is working together to support each other and the community by carrying out city council policies. It also means sharing information across departments and aligning processes and fostering innovation. And last, certainly not least, integrity is being honest, reliable, respectful, ethical, fair, and authentic. And I can't think of a better summary of core values than that. And I congratulate our staff for taking that initiative and moving forward in that activity. And now with that, we'll move on to item number 16. Staff report, please.
So Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this first item is a public hearing involving one of the two bids, in this case, the restaurant bid. And you did discuss this a little bit in study session. But there are four items for each of these two items that need to be okayed. The first one is one I'm going to talk about last, and that's the budget. The second one is to actually hold a public hearing and to measure protest. That's the third part. And you'll do that here in a few moments. And then thirdly is to appoint the new board for the restaurant bid. So, and this process will mirror the second hearing here in a few moments. I did want, maybe if Tara, if you could put up a couple of slides that we pulled together here in between your discussion this afternoon. Jump to the third page, the one where it talks about the, yeah, that's it. So I was struggling with explaining how there was an original proposal and then this revision that we've talked about. And as we see it, this is how it affects. The first one is the Restaurant Association, that they get, they have a budget of $193,000. They get $40,000 from us, but they also have to expend $40,000. So under the new plan, they would get $20,000 from us and expend zero because the city would be taking on that expenditure. And then similarly, you see the Corona del Mar bid budget as well. But Bernie, and I'll say this with a smile, Bernie just decided that not to budget for the admin and accounting. And that's fine. So it's not counted in there. But he, so he asked the city to cover that. So, and that's why you'll see that difference between the budget that they proposed versus the Restaurant Association. Again, that's just fine. So you can see how Bernie's bid has proposed changing that, that they'd have less money and they'd allocate a little bit less for some of those funds, some of those projects, the Gateway Project, the Marguerite Project. Let's jump back one slide now, if you could. So here's kind of a different slice of that same pie, that the city's funding was going to be $80,000. We're proposing that it go to $40,000. This is now for the bids combined. Initially, it was proposed that the city would fund all $101,000 of the admin and accounting. Now we're proposing that we don't transfer that money. Instead, we hire a part-time staffer at $45,000. So jump back one more slide. So this is just a snapshot of where we were last year. What we said was we'd give them $80,000 and then we ended up paying another 38 on top of that for $118,000. So now jump, jump ahead two slides back to the one I started with, please. So hopefully, this is a clearer picture of what we're trying to do. Maybe not. I'd certainly welcome any questions you might have about it.
Questions? It must be perfectly clear.
I don't think it is, but I hear.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
I, I wouldn't even know the question to ask. But I'm puzzled though, or maybe more compelled by Councilmember Hen's comments about following the cash. And while we are accepting the responsibility for the admin, is the restaurant bid receiving a similar or the same cash that they use to support their programs in the past? The thought was that the offset, the $20,000, that they would in fact pay the $20,000 for those services. But what I thought I heard Jim suggest was that really, this puts them in a cash deficit to program items. And I thought that, Councilmember Hen, you concurred with that. I guess I'm struggling with, are they getting the same amount or a similar amount to be able to program a successful bid run? And I don't think that they are.
Really?
My understanding is that this has improved their picture by $20,000.
Look at attachment B and C.
You should hear Jim's perspective on it because I, I look at it one way and I know he may look at it a different way. And I respect that. But to me, I was relieving the, the city would be relieving of $40,000 in costs and yet taking back $20,000 in revenue for a net upside of 20. Again, from what it was proposed, from what it was their original budget.
Well, what we're showing in attachment C is that they end up with, instead of $46,000, $66,000 for marketing, which is an increase.
Well, if I'm reading this right, the reason it works for Corona del Mar, not for the Restaurant Association, is that, is Corona del Mar is reducing the amount of money it's contributing to the city projects from what they were going to contribute. Is that correct?
Yes, but remember, we didn't agree necessarily with Bernie in pulling out that $40,000 in the first place. So if you had, you needed, in one way or form or another, add $40,000 to Bernie's budget as a cost. Bernie already took that out, again, which is fine.
Okay, I'll recalculate.
Okay. So coming back to the Restaurant Association. The old deal was, they had, they got $40,000 in funding from the city and they had to pay for their accounting and support costs. And their accounting and support costs were $31,000, right?
This is the last year, the current year?
Or the current year.
The year that we're in now.
When I mean the old deal, I mean the deal that's in effect right now.
Currently, they're paying $10,000 for the administration because the city is covering the accounting portion. So going into the new fiscal year, they would be absorbing the full $40,000 in costs for the administration and the accounting services.
Whereas 100% of the funding that we were giving them, $40,000, they would be giving back. So none of that could go into marketing or promotion. It was all administrative. Now their administrative costs under the new plan will be...
They will have no administrative costs. The city will incur that. Instead, give them $20,000 instead of $40,000.
So the net gain is $20,000.
That's how I see it, yeah.
Okay, I guess, is Jim still out there?
Yes.
I guess I'd just like to hear Jim say, okay, yeah, now I get it. You're right. I just want to make sure.
Well, let's... Yeah, we, this is the only thing we knew you wanted to follow up on. So I'd certainly welcome everyone's comments, including Jim's.
Yeah, I guess I would like to hear from Jim. Okay.
Thank you for the request. It's not funny math, it sounds like it. But, you know, here's how I look at it. You know, we, first of all, in this year, we were not given the opportunity to put this out to an RFP. So automatically, we were looking at a potential $40,000 potential cost in administrative as well as accounting. True, the city in the past has given us, and we had agreed, that the city would give us $40,000 a year for the next, I think, four years. What I see happening is, it's kind of like you're giving us the 40, but you're taking the 40. And now we've cut that 40 down to 20, but you've also cut our income 20. The net result is, we actually, even though it looks like we have $60,000 for marketing, we don't have the same amount of ability to take that marketing fund from, and I think you had come up with a net result, not of 20, but $8,000 was our net increase after all was said and done. Because I think last year, or at least going into this year, our cost is going to be about $32,000 for the marketing as well, and not for the marketing, but for the administrative as well as the accounting. And so according to your numbers, Dave, at least what I saw, our net result, after all was said and done, was about an $8,000 gain.
But it was a gain over the previous year.
It was a gain of $8,000, correct.
If we had done exactly the same, there would have been no gain or there had been a loss. So this is a gain. It may not be as big a gain as you want, but it is a gain, if I'm understanding you.
Well, it's a gain of $8,000. But again, what frankly I feel the city has, whether by design or however you want to call it, Nancy, what the city has done is put us in a position where we did not have an opportunity to put out for the accounting and/or the bid administrator and RFP. We were given the fact that Will Dan and Whitaker was going to continue to be our two firms that we deal with. And what happened was, last year, we had a total of $10,000. Now, we, we got frankly quite a deal and we still have about another three or four months before their contract is out. And Will Dan came to the recognition, because of so much of the things that went on in this past year, that they were required to be at a heck of a lot more meetings than they had planned on. And we had a lot more meetings than we planned on. So Will Dan, in reaction to that, has upped their cost based on their experience. And I don't think going into this next year or the remainder of this year in 2015, that hopefully, we're going to go through a strategic plan. We're going to go through all the things that we've gone through with the Restaurant Association in this current and past year. So part of my point is, I think that if we'd have been given the opportunity to bid these things out, I mean frankly, from an accounting standpoint, to pay $20,000 or $25,000 a year for the accounting of the bid is ridiculous. I don't spend that much money on my own restaurant and I write a heck of a lot more checks than the bid ever writes. So I think that that number was inflated.
Well, I guess the one exception I would make is that when we're talking about the bid administrator, we're not simply talking about writing a few checks. We are talking about someone who's, if I'm understanding it, who's going to carry things through the city and will be that staff person. It will not be always having to go to Mary, who has other responsibilities. This will be the person. This will be the person that will get everything done through the city staff. Is that, I mean, will be that person that gets --
This is in the new proposal with the --
Yes, the new proposal.
Yes.
Whereas right, whereas right now, if you have, the independent person that is hired is doing it and then going to staff anyway to get things done. So, we're eliminating --
We're finding, we don't save any time. It just costs Jim more money, so that's why there's --
And frankly, that's kind of true. You know, Mary's been vital to us, and we definitely appreciate her, and we appreciate everybody in the staff, Tara and Dave as well. However, in part of that context, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but we are going to take on part of that administrative ourselves. We're going to have our own person take our minutes, we're going to have our own person conduct our meetings, do our agendas. That's not going to be part of the city's responsibility. The city will be there to guide us and to help us with the Brown Act or whatever definition we might need. But in terms of the administrative part, the administrative part is now becoming part of the bid's responsibility, and, you know, however we determine that cost, right now, what I'm looking to do is tap in to Visit Newport. We already have Polly Peak, and I feel that Polly, since we're paying her $5,000 a month, can afford to take notes and help us do the agendas for the bid. Having said that, what's left is the accounting part. And the accounting part is, we're being billed $20,000 at this point, or $20,000 is being taken out of our 40. And my point is this, look, you can do the numbers, and you can say, "Well, yes, you're getting more money." But the fact is, Nancy and the rest of the council, we are still struggling. We don't have a lot of money. When you think about the magnitude and the community of the Restaurant Association, if we want, if we, if you desire, and we need to put on a restaurant week, and we need to do some effective marketing here, we need to have some more consideration. And that's why I said, can we up our restaurant week an additional $10,000, which will give us basically $16,000? And we will try and do our best to hold our costs down, work within Visit Newport, and try and put on Restaurant Week. Without that, we don't, we don't really have a lot of wiggle room here.
All right, so what you're saying, that if you have the extra $10,000 in terms of a special event?
Correct.
Then you're cool with the rest of it?
Yes.
Okay.
I think one thing that hasn't been taken into consideration is the opportunity to improve your collectibles, your receivables. And I think that, I know the city staff is thinking about different ways to assist in that. And if we could make it, what's the total amount on those arrears right now?
About $34,000.
Thirty, say it again?
$34,000.
$34,000. So, if we picked up half of that, a quarter of that.
That would be great, you know, and I appreciate that rush, but heretofore, that hasn't happened. And it's not just the fees. The other thing that I've tried to be informative about is that, again, I don't feel that the city really has the degree of enforcement that the city needs to have. And I think it's to the city's, you know, loss. Because, you know, you have people within the bid, not just the restaurant bid, but the CDM bid, that say they have 10 employees, and as you know, bid fees are based on employees, and when they really have 50. So, they're paying $95 a year when they should be paying 600 or 700, whatever it is. So, you have two issues here. You have the collection, but there's nobody that's enforcing. When somebody puts down, they have five employees or six employees, nobody's enforcing that. And I won't, in this forum, name you the people that are doing that, but I can tell you, we're aware of it.
But aren't there, don't you think also, and I think that is an issue that obviously would be significant, but don't you think also that one reason that your collectibles are so much higher in terms of a percentage than the Corona Del Mar bids, is that you do have members that really don't feel that there's any value in being a member, probably more strongly, that they're not, they don't really feel like a restaurant in the sense of, say, being benefited by a restaurant week, and that that's one of the reasons, and that maybe you need to look at some of the ways your memberships are structured in addition to collectibles? I mean, my understanding is that even like the, a gas station, Quick Stop is a member. Well?
No, and you're absolutely right. And that's one of the things that I've talked about in the past and going forward within our strategic plan, is to redefine who should be members of the Restaurant Association and/or what they should pay. And I fully agree with you. You know, frankly, I don't feel, in all honesty, that the Restaurant Association can do everybody justice. We can't do a gas station with a food facility justice, and therefore, should they be responsible to pay? Having said that, what we have to realize is, when we make those changes, it's definitely going to impact our income stream. And so, how do we offset that? What do we do to try not, you know, really lose an income stream? What I would like to see is where we go in and redefine the members of the Restaurant Association, and then at that point, reestablish a different bid fee structure for the people that can really benefit from the Restaurant Association.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
There you go.
Well, I've had lunch at Quick Stop before, but my question is, as far as these delinquencies go, can the muscle of the city help out with this? Or, I mean, what do you see, anything we can do?
Well, we thought it would probably be appropriate, it could be appropriate for us to bill directly for them on a municipal services statement on a bimonthly basis and to encourage that. Now, we wouldn't shut off your water if you don't pay, but that may be a different way that would encourage people to do that. We've been reluctant to apply more enforcement tools, frankly, in part because of what Councilman Gardner and Mr. Walker have talked about. Some people don't feel like they're getting that value, so applying the hammer of the city on top of that to us as a staff was just an uncomfortable position to be in.
Okay, so for that reason, though, I don't think we should count on any, I don't think we should count, for purposes of this discussion, we shouldn't count on anything from that because staff still hasn't put forward anything concrete that's, that it makes it clear it's going to make a difference. We don't have anything in front of us that says it's clearly going to make a difference on collections. So, I, in my mind, I set that issue aside. I hope, we do need to follow through on it, but I set it aside for purposes of this discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think what you're telling us is, look, cutting through all the back and forth and staff's perspective and your perspective, you need $10,000 more to do Restaurant Week this year.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm in favor of $10,000 more to make sure we get Restaurant Week done again this year and again, while you're going through your reassessment of your strategic positioning.
With the, would that motion be with the acceptance, for at least this year, of the proposed budget for the bid? So, would it be the proposed budget for, proposed budget for the bid that's here and the structure of the part-time hire, plus the $10,000 special event increase in the --
So, using, using the slide that's on the screen?
Right, I will second that.
Yeah, the revised column would reflect an additional $10,000 of city funding.
All right. We have a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
You.
Any other council discussion on this motion? All right, I'd like to open it.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I would like to open it up to the public at this point in time. Is anyone from the public like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Hill and members of the city council. My name is Jim Mosher, as I often am. I'm a little confused by the sequence here from the agenda. I believe you are holding a public hearing to see if there is a protest by 50% or more of the people who will be assessed fees for being in the Restaurant Association. I am not one of those people, so I cannot participate in that. However, I think before you also is the very valid question of whether the whole idea of this is of value to the people of Newport Beach, because you do not have to have a Restaurant Association, whether or not there is a protest about it. I would like to say that I've been to most of the meetings of the Restaurant Association, and I think Mr. Walker does a commendable and thoughtful job of running the organization that he has been given. But I just fundamentally disagree with the concept that is a proper role of the city government, to be subsidizing private businesses, and particularly, if we're going to do that to pick out a particular business or class of businesses to subsidize, when we do not offer the same marketing support or subsidies to other businesses in the city, that would seem to be equally worthy to me. I really don't see what is different about restaurants than any other business. I don't believe the fantastic claims that we hear, not tonight, but at similar council meetings to this and years past, that this is an investment rather than a burden on the city, and that every dollar we put into this restaurant marketing is bringing back tens or hundreds of dollars to the citizens of Newport Beach. I'm just a common resident, and I actually, while it may be enriching some of the business people, I do not see any value in it for me, and I'm not sure why my tax dollars are going into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment on this particular item? All right, then, seeing that, we'll bring it back to the council to move through the elements of this. Should we do this on individual votes, or how do you, how does staff recommend? One vote?
Did you measure protests already? Sorry. Okay.
Now is the time to present any protests for the Newport Beach Restaurant Association Business Improvement District. Are there any protests at this time? And I have received none in my office also.
Thank you. Then, it would be appropriate, I think, to amend your motion to include the --
Mike's motion.
It was Mike's motion.
So, what we're doing is approving the results of the protest?
So, yeah. Yeah, so you'd be approving, for Item C, you'd be approving the resolution, and then Item D, appointing the people listed there to the bid advisory board of directors.
And Item A, approving the budget with an extra $10,000 in there.
That was your original motion, it had that, though.
What he said.
I second it.
All right, any further discussion? Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, we'll move on to Item Number 17.
I'll let Tara or Mary do this one, because I'm tired, no.[1416.33][1416.33][laughing]
Well, we've already had, had the president say, of the bid, say it's okay, so we don't have to do it.
Okay, yeah, Item 17 is a renewal of the Corona Del Mar Business Improvement District. We ask you to approve the budget this evening as revised on Page 218, hold the public protest hearing, and adopt the board members as listed in your agenda.
I move that we approve this.
All right. Any further discussion by the council? Then I'd like to open it up to public hearing. Is anybody from the public that would like to speak on Item Number 17? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the council for vote. Please vote.
One moment. Now is the time to receive protests for the Corona Del Mar Business Improvement District. If there are any protests, you can bring them up forward now. I have also received no protests in my office.
So, I amend my motion to include the vote, or the lack of votes, and to approve the board.
Resolution.
And the resolution.
Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Item Number 18, we're asked to continue this item. However, I believe that Councilwoman Dagel will need to recuse herself at this point in time.
I do, I have an economic interest. I receive income from the telecommunications industry.
Move the item be continued to June 24th.
Wait for it. Please.
Move the item be continued to June 24th.
Second.
Any further discussion? Anyone from the public like to speak on this item?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, the, my name is Jim Mosher. The item you're considering is a proposal for a telecom cellphone site, which is going to be essentially on the grounds of the Newport Beach Golf Country Club, and where it meets the tennis club and is opposite, in the parking lot opposite the entrance to Newport Beach and Company. The reason it's before you is it's another proposal, like you approved a month or so ago, for a naked, freestanding, undisguised pole of the kind that was going to be hidden among the netting at the other golf course up on Mesa Drive. I realize you're just voting to continue this, but my comment is, it would, I think, really be in the public's interest and in the city's interest if the applicant during that month were to consider some other way of deploying these antennas, perhaps in a, disguised in a rooftop, in a building facade, or some way that would be less in-your-face than the current proposal. I think that would be time well spent between now and a month from now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the council. Please vote.
Dave Webb, on this next item, Number 19. The map shows a circle. Is that circle exactly the area that's going, we're talking about?
It's the approximate area, Newport Heights area, but there are some variations.
Okay, because we had, I had to recuse myself from the general one, but this one was not a problem, okay.
Yes, and --
Okay, for Item 18, I need to also read the vote. It's unanimous, 6-0, with Councilmember Dagel recusing herself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item Number 19, Councilman Petros and Councilman Hill, Mayor Hill, will be recusing themselves because of potential conflicts of interest with property owned within the 500-foot circle, and Mayor Protem Selig will be in charge.
Yeah, absolutely scary.
Item, Item Number 19 is the 2013-2014 Citywide Slurry Seal Program Award of Contract Staff Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem Selig and remaining council members. This is year six of our seven-year cycle that we've been working our way through the city, and this program basically creates an asphalt slurry coat on your residential streets. We also do city parking lots when we're in the jurisdictions. This year, we're looking to award this contract to All American South for $520,200, with also a 10% contingency of $52,000. It did come in below our estimate, and we will be looking at doing the Newport Heights area. This, again, includes just slurry sealing. We've already done the concrete work in the fall, and now we'll be following up with this.
Will it be approved?
Second.
Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, bring it back for a vote.
With Mayor Hill and Councilmember Petros recusing themselves, the motion carries 5-0. Go ahead.
You can return, Mayor Hill.
No, go ahead, do the rest of the meeting. Quick. Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote? Okay. On any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? He tried to overthrow, but he didn't make it.
Yes, with my encouragement.
I take it we have none. With that, we are adjourned.